Good evening. Welcome to the City of West Miami. Just because I hit the gavel doesn't mean that you change your face. I mean, I want to see the smile tonight. Welcome to the City of West Miami. Today is a special committee, commission meeting at May 3rd, 2017, a little bit after 7:00 PM. For the...
Pledge of Allegiance.
Oh, okay. I got confused for a moment here. Normally, we have the invocation. For the pledge of allegiance, chief.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please recede. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Mayor Eduardo Mujina.
Present.
Vice Mayor Candida Blanca.
Yes.
Commissioner Juan Blanes.
Present.
Commissioner Ronda Rodriguez.
Present.
Commissioner Luciana Suarez.
Yes.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Next item?
Item three, citizens' presentations. No presentation, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Let's go right into the agenda. Item 4A.
Item four, new business agenda items. Item 4A, presentation of Employee of the Year 2016 awards. The first one is the presentation of award to Blanca Varela Marquez, Employee of the Year 2016, from the Community Center Department by Mayor and City Commission.
Thank you very much. Could I ask Marilin Maraya to... I know you love to speak.
You enjoy, huh?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the commission.
Name and address for the record.
Jesus, yes. This is too loud. Can you lower this volume? My name is Marilyn Miraya. I'm the project director for the Community Center. This evening, I have the pleasure to nominate Blanca Varela as the employee of 2016 for the City of West Miami Community Center. Ms. Varela has been working with the city for 16 years. Wow, a long time. She is a loyal, responsible person. She makes sure that the seniors are safe. That's her first priority. And this year, I've given Ms. Varela a couple tasks in the department. As you know, as you all know, I'm in the drop, so soon I'll be dropping or I'm leaving. I'm not sure yet with the Alliance requirements. So, I want to make sure that she, that her and Carmela, which they work, and the only two people that worked in the office, are qualified to run the department as well as it's been run, you know, through all these years. Blanca is a very honest employee. Blanca's been with me for many years, and through all those years, she's proven herself to be very loyal to me and to the city. That's why I nominate Blanca as the Employee of the Year 2016 for the Community Center, and I would like for Blanca to join us and, of course, say a couple words, Blanca, and receive the Award of the Year.
She will really love that.
Blanquita, Blanquita.
Come on, Blanca, come on.
Just coming over for the picture.
You'll have to come up, come up. It's whitey, come up.
Once you're here, we'll trick you into a speech.
This is our new whitey. She left her hair, she doesn't want to dye her hair anymore. She wants to meet with the seniors, not me. I'll dye mine until I die.
I'd kill to have that hair.
How about if we... Let's move forward?
No, but she's going to talk. She's going to talk.
Oh, okay.
She's going to talk.
Okay.
Blanca.
Thank you.
Blanca, I'm going to stay sitting down just for you. Go ahead.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may add just something very quick. Blanquita used to be a resident of the City of West Miami. When she came to work, she was clueless about what it took and what the mission of the Community Center was. And since then, and in each passing year, she has become very well acquainted, not only with our local program, but with the Alliance for Aging, which is our funding agency, and that agency that regulates us based on the state of Florida. And so, Blanca has mastered, I think, well, obviously, she's had a great teacher and a great mentor, but she has mastered pretty much the rules and regulations of the center. And as Marilyn stated, her first and foremost important duty is to the seniors, to ensure their well-being and their safety, and obviously, to live up to the terms and conditions of the contract. So, I as well congratulate you, Blanca, for a job very well done, always.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, if I may, Blanca, when my grandmother was there, it's been a few years now, she always spoke so very highly of Blanca. I would hear your name constantly, "Blanca did this, Blanca's so sweet, Blanca's so nice." She would always speak to me about you, and it was always in the highest regard. So, thank you for taking care of her so well while she was there.
Thank you.
Mayor, when I said...
Absolutely.
Something very short. Because I am the youngest in the table.
Yes, yes.
And I am in charge of the Senior Center.
I think you can register to go already.
Yes, yes, yes.
I think you might have made that age.
Yes, I have you, I have you, I guess, as a sponsor. But I like to say something. Blanca, everything you said, I don't want to repeat. She is wonderful. But on top of that, she make a new style, she knows she is younger, she is wonderful. All the people are very happy with her.
Okay, let's come forward.
I think they're also joined here by Carmela Madera, who's here to see her colleague get her award. Carmela?
Employee of the Year 2016 presented to Blanca Varela Marquez. We extend the department for your outstanding service and in recognition of your commitment in improving the quality of life and display of living stewardship. Congratulations. Congratulations to the mayor and the West Miami City Commission. Day of this third day of May.
Thank you.
Hey, it's Smiley.
I'm going to write it for that. For the stuff.
I know the one. We did it because it is just Colombian coffee. She have it too. Four words.
Miraya, you have the third.
Thank you. All right, Carmela, thank you for coming.
This is the contract that we're sending them away. I don't know. I don't know. Blanquita, mira el sobre que está atrás con mí.
Sure. You want me to... The next department is the award to Employee of the Year for 2016 for the Finance and Administration Department. Mr. Mayor, it is my privilege and my pleasure to nominate Ladies Regalado as the 2016 recipient of the Finance and Administration Employee of the Year. Ladies started working for the City of West Miami on November 15th, 2013. She was assigned to Facilities and Maintenance Division while working another job at a local business in the City of West Miami. She held this position for a period of almost two years. During her time in the Facilities and Maintenance Department, she took an interest in assisting the front office accounting staff during her personal lunch break during our peak passport season. By answering phones and learning the day deposit routine, she quickly learned and on her own started to develop a working relationship with the front office. Shortly thereafter, on October 29th, 2015, Ladies was promoted to a clerical position in the Finance and Administration Division. Ladies is extremely courteous and always willing to learn as she grows with the city. I see Ladies continued improvement and desire to work as an asset to the city and the residents that we serve. Ladies is a living testament, Ladies is a living testament that you can make a difference if you try hard enough and if your heart is in the right place. It is therefore my privilege to nominate Ladies Regalado for the Finance and Administration 2016 Employee of the Year Award.
Employee of the Year Award 2016 presented to Ladies Regalado Finance and Administration Department for your outstanding service and recognition of your commitment to improving the quality of life and display of leadership. Congratulations. Eduardo H. Williams, mayor of the West Miami City Commission, dated this third day of May, 2017.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Police Department Chief.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, Officer Willie Paz first came to our department in 2008. He was formerly with the School Board Police Department. Since then, he's worked on all of the shifts for all of the current and former sergeants. And all I hear from current and the former sergeant are accolade about Officer Paz's work, ethics, and his just dogged determination to keep going. This is an unbelievable tribute to enjoy in any department. While our department may have many fine officers, being considered outstanding by all the supervisors is something really incredible. Proof of this is his work ethics and determination is evidence he's been selected as the most outstanding officer of the quarter nine times in his time he's been here. And if that was not enough, he was selected as the most outstanding officer of the year on three separate occasions, three separate years. Officer Paz can always be counted on to correctly and promptly complete any task that's assigned to him. Perfect example is he was given last year the duties as the property custodian. Anytime our officers confiscate something, drugs, or any evidence, it's turned into property, and it's Officer Paz's responsibility to make sure that it's catalogued correctly. When the officer is needed for court, it has to be signed out. If it needs to go to the lab, all those are, all those tasks are conducted flawlessly by Officer Paz. One of the other duties as the property custodian is to, whenever there's a destruction of property, mostly drugs, it requires going to the state attorney's office, going to the court, getting a court order, getting everything authorized, putting together a group of officers to escort the drugs under armed guard to the destruction facility, making sure that it's done, collecting all the documented papers to later prove to the courts that, in fact, it was destroyed as recommended. So, based on those things and many others, it's with great honor and sincerity that I recommended Officer Willie Paz for the Employee of the Year Award for the Police Department.
Employee of the Year Award 2016 presented to Officer William Paz, Police Department for your outstanding service and recognition of your commitment to improving the quality of life and display of leadership. Congratulations. Eduardo, I mean, the mayor and the West Miami City Commission, dated this third day of May, 2017.
Willie?
You're missing Smiley.
The next item on your agenda is the selection for Employee of the Year 2016 for the Department of Public Works. You get to pick two people.
Mayor, Commissioners, it wouldn't be fair if I only get to pick one. It's a big department. Darius Aikens is the gentleman that was selected for this year, 2016 recognition. Darius has worked with the city for many years and has taken upon himself to obtain his CDL license, and he has shown responsibility where he drives a truck with the rest of the crew onboard and does it in a very professional manner. Darius couldn't be here tonight because he's actually on vacation. So, we'll skip his for the next meeting if it's okay with you.
No Colombian coffee for him.
We'll use it for coffee. The other recognition I get is for our office staff, since we now have a staff. The Employee of the Year for 2016 is Mercy Soler. Soler, sorry, Mercy. As you know, two years ago, we took on the Building Department, and usually, when you assign people things to do, they learn how to do the stuff, but don't really blend into it. I could tell you right now that Mercy could sit with any contractor out there and tell them what he's missing when he submits his information. So, she has taken this department and runs it on a day-to-day by herself with minimal supervision from myself, and only when I mess up does she call it to my attention. So, for those reasons, Mercy is our 2016 Employee of the Year Award.
It should be noted, though, Mr. Mayor, that Mercy started her career with the City of West Miami at the West Miami Recreation Center way before John Michael started to work for the city, and she has really developed professionally, so the sky's the limit for Mercy. And her sister happens to be a teacher, and Barbie also does tutoring at the West Miami Recreation Center, so it's all in the family. She has no interest in looking at the camera. And Ms. Soler, that's right, and Mercy's mom does help out at the West Miami Community Center, so it's a, it's a family of...
Zoe start.
Zoe, I need to see her driver's license before she comes onboard. Yeah. So, it's a family that's devoted to public service, and for that, we thank them. The, the next award is the Mayor's Award for Excellence because the West Miami Recreation Department employee who was selected is not able to be here this evening, so he will be here on this, at the next commission meeting. So, Mr. Mayor, I know you wanted to say a couple of words before we read the memo.
Very simple. I think the Mayor's Awards start with somebody that put the extra, extra smile. And like Mr. Penna said, I feel here is a one person, but two persons this time. I really admire the people that put the extra smile, always put a smile in their face, and those two are Cari Acosta and Mr. Q. And I call them the A.T.s.
The A.T. is right, absolutely. Mr. Q. Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor, did you want us to read the memo into the record?
Why don't we do the following? You can tell how...
Beauty and the Beast.
Okay. Order, order here.
Yeah.
Ms. Aguilar, please read the memo into the record.
Okay. The mayor has, has prepared a memo, and actually, we met, and he wanted for me to read it while he was standing up there. And this memorandum is to the, to the City Commission as to his reasons for selecting a dual award this year. And it says the following. Every year, I have the distinct pleasure of recognizing an individual who makes a difference in our city. This memorandum will serve to recognize two individuals this year that continue to excel, grow, and continue to make a difference in the City of West Miami, therefore, earning the privilege of being selected for the 2016 Mayor's Award for Excellence. This evening, the Office of the Mayor recognizes Mr. Jose Quintana. Jose Quintana accepted the position of Webmaster on March 21st, 2014. Since then, Mr. Q. started with the creation of the city website, and since, he has been responsible for uploading all city department information that residents can easily access to include the live streaming of our City Commission meetings and building the archives on the website, all photography for city events, assisted with all the logistics for the art festival, and recently, the city's 70th anniversary celebration to include all the music and sound system coordination. He created a social media page for the city on Facebook. He prepares all the artwork in connection with all the city flyers and is slowly creating a list of city emails so that we can have access to as many residents as possible. In addition, Mr. Q. has taken on the task of servicing all city computers for all departments, cellular phones for city-issued cellphones. He's assisted with the implementation of the pay online of the water and sewer and garbage bill, and is now working with staff so that we can implement the pay-by-phone feature as well. In addition to the above, Jose Quintana was responsible for the rewiring with direction from Mr. Penna and help from that department as well of the new public services building to ensure that they had telephone and computer internet wiring capabilities resulting in a savings of in excess of $15,000 to the City of West Miami. Jose Quintana has become instrumental and an essential complement to the city and all of its departments. His talents are endless. He works in harmony and has developed a great relationship with everyone. Mr. Q., as we refer to him, is an asset to this city, and he is part of this year's dual recognition by the Office of the Mayor for 2016. Congratulations.
I can tell you nothing. Mr. Q., so we want to present you with this award from the Mayor's Office. For last year, 2016, remember that. Thank you so much for your work. Thank you for your dedication to the City of West Miami.
Thank you, Q. The next election for the dual award for the 2016 Mayor's Award for Excellence is Cari Acosta. Cari Acosta is my assistant. That's right. Cari was hired by the city on January 25th, 2005. Fast forward, Cari is, as we know her, has distinguished herself and earned this award for her ability to multitask in our city, and God, can she do that. While Cari is assigned to the Office of the City Manager, she has become yet another integral part of the city administration and the executive office and the face of the passport office. Cari is responsible for training and coordinating all training for passport clerks, develops work schedules for them, even to include the extended hours. She handles payroll services with the accounting department staff with Mrs. Leon and Rita Rodriguez, and also assists the mayor and city commissioners with secretarial needs as required. She's also become the special events coordinator for the city, and thus, all of this, wearing a professional hat and a smile on her face. Cari is meritorious for this recognition and accepts all tasks assigned to her with a sense of loyalty and pride. Cari is dedicated and a city employee that has earned this dual recognition as the mayor's selection for the 2016 Award for Excellence.
With that, we want to present you with this award for 2016. Thank you, thank you very much. And by the way, Fernando, I don't know how she does it, but she's always has a smile in her face. So, thank you for that. There you go.
Coffee, coffee for Fernando.
Yes. I'd like to take a picture. Thank you very much. Very well received.
Okay, ma'am.
Thank you. Congrats.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congrats, ma'am. Congrats.
Thank you so much.
A lot more.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, ma'am.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
A lot more.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you for coming to the West Miami City...
Speech, speech.
West Miami Oscar's Award.
Just so you know, the entertainment's free, we don't pay you. It's free entertainment, that's why we invited you.
That's why, that's why.
Completely free.
That's why you come next to me.
It's for hire, if you'd like.
All right. We're gonna take two minutes for the next meeting. Thank you.
See, we have to, we need, we need a motion to adjourn, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
What are we doing?
Adjourning.
Adjourning.
I need a motion to adjourn. All the favors say aye.
Aye.
Let's take two minutes.